All right, good evening, folks, and welcome to our general session for September. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance officially opening this session at 7:07?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin with my mayor comments, councilors, there is one agenda item that Mr. Norberg has asked us to add. Agenda item number 11, accept and award timber sales. It should be in your packet or handout next to your packet there. And so that would be agenda item number 11, and then which pushes good to the order to agenda item number 12. And just for comments, just want to welcome back, obviously, back to school, so all of our teachers, and thank you for your hard work, and especially our students. And just a reminder for everybody to be safe on our roads, and it's getting darker. It's darker earlier and getting darker, well, early in the morning and early in the evening. So just be safe out there on our streets. And I just want to make a comment. We just continue to see great improvements happening around our city buildings, painting, remodeling that's going on on numerous buildings all over our cities. So I want to just thank all of the property owners and all the investment that's being made there. And obviously, to that end, I want to say shop local and make sure we support these local shops. They need it, especially in this day and age. And last but not least, I want to mention, I received a message of Councilor Marshall resigning as our city councillor, and so I want to at least notify our community of that as well. I want to mention, Councilor Marshall, Jake Marshall, came on in May of 2021. He actually filled a vacancy. So we had a vacancy on this team, and... And so, for one, I just... Thank you, Jake, Councilor Marshall, for just stepping up and serving. Man, he did an incredible job, and I just want to express my deep appreciation for him. With his experience, he just immediately contributed to numerous projects and improvements in our city as part of the team. And so I just want to thank him for that and for his service over these last four-plus years. And I know he's going to be involved. And continue to serve. And volunteer in our communities. So thank you, Jake Marshall, for your service on this team as a city councillor. So on that note, rather than good to the order, I would like to go ahead at this point. And because we have a vacancy, I'm going to open for application for the vacancy of a city councillor. And so that means if you're interested, you're going to get an application from our city recorder, Elizabeth Kinney. Or you can get one certainly from Mr. Norberg, our city manager. We're going to open the application process through October 24th. So a little bit over a month, month and a half. The reason for that deadline is then that hits our November session. We have the opportunity, if we wish... To consider and appoint a new councillor for that vacancy. And that is now open through the 24th. All right, Councilor Corvis.
I have no comments to add.
Okay. Councilor Cooper.
I just also want to say thank you to Councilor Marshall for all the contributions that he's made over the years. He was very influential in our decision with the streets. Helped out a lot on our streetscape during his time here. He did a lot of wonderful work, and I appreciate him.
Councilor Flynn.
No additional comments.
Councilor Westram.
Two things. Number one, who's in charge of the reader board at the community building? How do we get a hold of her to change? It's not the Fourth of July anymore.
I just saw her resetting that the other day. It's still there.
It's still there. And everybody, mark your calendars. Friday, September 25th, Kokil Rotary is going, they're bringing back the auction. It's going to be at the community building. Oktoberfest is the theme. It's going to be a lot of fun. You're going to see people that you should not be seeing wearing lighter hosen. And so Friday, September 25th, community building doors open at 5:00. That's it.
Yeah, I'd just like to ditto. Thank you, Councilor Jake Marshall, for your years of service and your knowledge. It'll be missed.
All right, thank you, councilors. Thank you, councilors. We're going to move on to agenda item number five, consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar 81825, meeting minutes.
Okay, motion by Councilor Cooper to accept the consent calendar, seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, councilors. And staff reports. Mr. Norberg, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Pretty much everything that's in my council report is in the council packet. So unless you have any questions, I don't have anything to add.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Looks like we don't have any questions. Just a reminder for everybody online, we're referring to a packet that's available online. It really should be. Cityofkokil.org, and so the staff reports are there. So our next in line is our interim chief, Chief Latimer for Kokil Fire and Rescue.
I'd just like to add, you know, school's back in session. We responded to two car wrecks today, so please just be, you know, cautious in the school zone, driving safe. It's going to get cold, it's going to get wet, so let's just try to keep the streets safe. And everybody just keep doing a good job like they have been.
And just a reminder to our community, spread the word, we're still looking for an EMT one or paramedic, correct?
We're looking for an EMTI or paramedic. We currently have a paramedic who has accepted a position, but we're still looking for some part-time guys to help out. And we're still looking for volunteers for your local fire department, if anybody's interested.
Chief.
Any questions for Zach? All right, thank you. Thanks, chief. The chief fire marshal, Kenny Wells.
I do have one correction to add on my report at the bottom of the bullet point. 154 North Birch, it should be 154 North Baxter. Other than that, I have nothing to add, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Looks like we don't have any questions. We're going to move on to our planning department update. Haley Sheldon's here.
Hello, I do not have anything to add to my update. Let me know if you have any questions.
I have just a comment, thank you for your efforts, for the grants. I know that you and Mark work on a lot of grants as well. We obviously didn't get one, but we're still thankful for the... The Jude Dan Mogan Foundation. And I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate that you put that in here, that you've tried. Even if we don't get it, so thank you for all your efforts, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yep, just one question. On your September 8th meeting, where's 498 West Central?
It's the, so you know on Central, right by Chevron, there's those storage units that are on the same side of the street as Chevron? Okay, so that's all in city limits, but there, that property, okay, is a big, long property. It goes in the back, and there's some houses in the back. Those houses aren't in city limits, but they're still on the property. So that property owner wants to annex in the northern part of their property, so that the whole thing's inside city limits. You know what I'm talking about? Okay.
All right, thank you, Haley. And we're going to move on to Director Danning, Community Building, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'd also like to thank Councilor Marshall. We started at the city the same time, so we had a connection there. But I liked working with him, I liked his enthusiasm. The only update I have from my report is that we're targeting a September, Thursday, September 18th, for ribbon cutting at the playground. And look to be inviting some kids out there as well. There's something that rang a little hollow about a bunch of adults out there opening a playground. The kindergarten, the school out there is real enthusiastic about it, but they didn't have school Friday. We were going to open, so now we're looking at Thursday, which should work for the park. And we'll go ahead and publicly notice this, you know, it'll be a public event. And so we'll just go ahead and notice it, you know, just so whoever can show up. And yep, we'll, yeah, just look for that to be posted. Other than that, happy to answer your questions.
I just want to publicly state it. Special thanks to the Native Plant Society of Oregon, KUS Soil and Water Conservation District, and the Friends of the River Walk, all partners for our parks. Already accomplished their work. And so also want to thank the Church of Jesus Christ. They had a group that came out and worked at Reitman's Park. And so I just, I just want to at least acknowledge, those are in the reports, and I love Director Danning that you put those in there. Anytime we can highlight, I love that, but I just want to at least publicly thank those folks as well for their investment in our city. Any other questions? All right, library, Director Lucas.
Hello, everyone. I have nothing to add to my report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I love to highlight the grants, so thank you for giving yet another grant, Director Lucas. What's the art project? I mean, what's, what is that grant?
This is actually a fun grant. The, who is it?
The...
The Marie Lamb from Charitable Foundation up in Lincoln City. They do glass floats, and they, I applied, and they gave us one, but then they turned around and gave us two. So it's for a community art project. So I have eight-by-nine-inch puzzle pieces at the library that people have been decorated with markers. And I envisioned something like a quilt, a crazy quilt. And so I'm looking for an artist who can come and take it out of my mind and use those pieces and put it on the wall for a lasting piece of art.
Also, any other questions?
Director Lucas. Future Kokil place.
Nothing to add to my report, Mr. Mayor, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you or the council may have.
Aren't you doing a seatbelt blitz coming up, or did I miss that already?
Not at this point, no. We will be focusing on back-to-school enforcement of the speed zones. But traffic grants have been a little bit wonky.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. And to all your officers, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
How are you doing on, and I apologize, you mentioned it a couple of months ago, the program for the business owners, property owners in the downtown area?
Yes, we're, my hope is to have that rolled out the first of the year. Looking at some of the input from our legal counsel, making sure that that program is ready to go. But we've gotten a lot of, a lot of very positive interest and feedback, and I think it's going to be a very good program for our downtown area.
Any other questions, or chief? All right, thank you, chief. And city recorder couldn't be here tonight, but Mr. Norberg's here, if you have any questions on her report. All right, there we go. That's it for our staff reports this month. We are now moving on to agenda item number seven, public participation. Do we have anybody sign up? And again, just a reminder for everybody who's listening in, it's your opportunity to speak for three minutes, address the council, the mayor. And nobody has signed up, so we're going to move on now to agenda item number eight, consideration of resolution 152025 approving the sale of Jefferson School lots. Probably, is that you, Mr. Norberg?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm happy that we have finally gotten to this point in the Jefferson School where we have, we're ready to sell the property to the developer. It's taken a lot of work on Ms. Sheldon and Mr. Danning's part, as well as some on mine, and our city attorney. And so basically, we're recommending that the city approve the sale of Jefferson School property to Northridge Development LLC.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution 152025, authorizing the sale of the Jefferson School lot for $10, and due consideration for the development of workforce housing, and authorizing the city... Any and all necessary documents. Second. Motion by Mayor Flaherty to adopt resolution 152025, seconded by Councilor Cooper. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Looks like that was a unanimous decision. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Haley, Mark. I'm going to use first name, sorry, my brain today. And Forrest, thank you for all your work and staff. It's great. And so just remind everybody, it's 11, right? 11 homes that are going in there?
Yes.
And so this is a big deal for a city, a lot that has just been sitting there. And so do we know about when they expect to break ground?
I would think that they would start doing some earthwork this fall.
Great, and so it leads us to our next agenda item resolution. We didn't have an action, or I didn't have one action sheet, but it's agenda item number nine, consideration or request for waiver of SDC fees, resolution 162025. Mr. Norberg.
Well, I apologize for the omission of the action sheet. I thought I did one, but maybe not. Essentially, we have a letter request from Northridge Development for the waiver of additional SDCs in the amount of $41,019. And as you recall, the council did pass a measure which allows for that waiver. The applicant did, and I'll refer to the resolution here. You know, the council passed ordinance number 1534, June 2nd, 2025, which allows the council, in its discretion, to exempt from system development charges capital premiums such as constructions of unit single-family housing, which provides for a substantial public benefit to community outside of the footprint of the development. And this development includes outside of its footprint, a number of items. Probably the most important part of that is the paving of West Seventeenth Place. So as you call, that's a dirt road now. And also the extension of a six-inch water main that will connect underneath there. I'll do that all in conjunction with our public works department. But we feel that there were also some conditions on the property which were not anticipated by the developer, and that was when we did the demolition, fill soil was put on top of organics. And so they'll have to strip all that off, and they did not anticipate that when they did their site visits. But the geotech report certainly indicated they need to do that. So we feel like the off-site benefits offset the remainder of the SDCs, and staff would recommend that the council approve that waiver.
So that'll be paved North Hemlock Street that circles around and connects to then West Seventeenth. So that'll be all paved right over to...
All the way up to Eighteenth. Right, there is a painting diagram that's in your packet that shows that you've got a portion of North Forest Street along with West Seventeenth Place that would be paved.
Yep, thank you. Sorry, turn the page.
Also notably, you have the actual diagram of the subdivision with the houses and all the improvements. So it's a pretty exciting point for us to get to.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 162025, authorizing the waiver of system development charges for Northridge Enterprises LLC related to the development of the Jefferson School property as part of the development entitlements for the development of workforce housing on said property.
I'm going to second that. Okay, so motion by Councilor Cooper to adopt resolution 162025, as he read, seconded by Mayor Flaherty. Any other questions or discussion before we go to vote? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Show of hands. And opposed? Are you for?
Oh, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, that was a unanimous decision. All said yes? Thank you. All right, again, looking forward to that happening. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work on that. All right, we're going to go to agenda item number 10, review draft RFP for lot 202. Norberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councils, councilors, sorry. So as we've discussed with you previously, we would like to issue an RFP for the development of lot 202, or as I like to call it, lot 10, 202 is correct. Basically, the gist of this is that we've had some interest in that lot. The RFP does not require the city to award the proposals to anybody, but we do think that there's enough interest to see that. Part of the development, and a lot of the work that was done on this was done by our city planner, Haley, and Mr. Danning, as far as designing what the outcome would be. And one of the biggest outcomes that we'd have there is the actual entryway that will then future connect to our city street. But this will be done by the developer as part of the requirements of the development. And like I said, I think it's a very complete RFP. We have a fairly good timeframe to allow people to propose on it. And we would, staff would request that the council approve this. Once again, you're not obligated to award. So you get to see what kind of proposals we get and decide if those are what you desire for that property.
Yeah, and if councilors didn't catch it, it's a sixty-day, it's about a sixty-day window. To accept proposals. Which, thank you, I'm glad we made that change from last month. That's a good...
One, one thing in the RFP that I see in the box, the lot 202 highlights, I didn't realize that that was Central Lincoln PUD. I thought that was KUS Curry. In the little box on the RFP.
It's right behind the action sheet.
On the back of the action sheet. Where it's located, or?
Yeah, in the box at the very start of the RFP. One, two, three, fourth bullet.
The fourth bullet, the last line, that's not Central Lincoln PUD.
Oh.
Right, yeah, that should be KUS Curry Electric, yeah. Just one little thing. I did, just kind of want to direct council's attention towards the last page before the attachments on seven. And that's just basically the evaluation criteria. And this, I don't think this will be your, your last chance to give input on this, but it would, it would be good to let proposers know. These were criteria we thought were important at the top of that page. If you take a look at basically those four categories, you know, we're looking for the right project, we're looking for the right developer, and, you know, we're looking for the financials on it. And we're looking for the extent to which the business provides needed services for the city of Kokil. So we basically broke it down into those four. And you'll be getting our evaluation on that, you know, based on the proposals we get.
So we would ask council to approve that as amended with Councilor Westram's change.
Any questions on the evaluation? Yeah, I mean, I don't have any questions, that looks great.
I'll make a motion to approve issuance of the RFP for lot 202 with Councilor Westram's amendment.
Second. All right, motion by Councilor Cooper to proceed with the RFP with the amended, which changed, Kenny, Curry? Seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, and thank you, Haley and Mark, again, in Forrest, yeah. Sorry, I'm just throwing out first...
If you notice, a few more gray hairs.
Yeah. It's a ton of work here, for sure. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number 11, accept bids for 2025 timber sale and award bid. I'm going to just jump right out with a motion because it's a formality. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the bids from Scott Timber and LBA contract cutting. Second. Motion by Mayor Flaherty to accept the bids from Scott Timber and LBA contract cutting, seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously, thank you. And so we'll move on now to our second one, Mr. Norberg.
So, and before I just jump into that, I just wanted to thank Haley and Mark particularly for, we work on a lot of things together, and they do a great job, and I appreciate that. You know, these, like, just in our fee, like, this is a fairly complex task to get it right, so just wanted to say that. Okay, so we worked on this cutting program for our timber sale. Within that, I worked with Mark quite a bit and our forester. You know, we do have watershed protection project that we did in Rinke Creek. So we made a lot of modifications back and forth to make sure that we honored that work of protecting our watershed, but also trying to maximize our timber sale. And I think we came up with a pretty good program for it, and the bids were both really good. So part of it is getting that, you know, trying to get this approved tonight so we can get that nailed down in the contract. And the high bidder was LBA contract cutting, who our forester is pretty familiar with, and that's $1,136,900, of which we will see about a million dollars of that after all of our costs. So that's a pretty good outcome. You know, a lot of the remainder of timber in Rinke Creek's really much more difficult to harvest, not saying that we won't do it. There's also some timber up there that's not particularly worth harvesting. So we'll look at that after this next, the 2025 timber sale. Most of the cutting will probably take place in 2026. So if, unless council has any questions, I would ask you to make a motion as denoted on item number two in staff recommendation.
Mr. Danning, your mind looks like it's thinking. Are you, you guys are all happy with everything that's proposed that's going to happen?
That's kind of a loaded question, though. I mean, I'd be happy if you never cut a sapling, you know, up in the watershed, of course. I mean, I'd be happy if you never cut a sapling, you know, up in the watershed, of course. You know, anything is a risk, but I think that, you know, we did the right thing, you know, approached this, looked at it as what the effect would be on the watershed. And, you know, it, you know, like, like I said, I'd be happy if we, you know, didn't cut anything up there, but, you know, the realities of, you know, this is a, you know, investment for the city, you know, it's part of our, part of our financing, you know, comes from this. And I think that, like I said, we, you know, we took a, we took a really close look at it, you know, adhering to the guidelines and recommendations set forth by the forester in here. So, yeah, I think anything you cut up there is a risk, but I think, you know, this is a, this is a measured, hopefully acceptable, risk. You know, some of the impacts from, from other cutting, you know, could have accelerated water down, you know, it's, it's coming down a different way into that watershed as well. So there's a lot of complications to it, but I think that, you know, we took a scientific and measured approach to it, and, yeah.
And you're happy with the outcome?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to LBA Contract Cutting in the amount of $1,136,900, and authorize the city manager to enact any such contracts and agreements pursuant to the award.
I'll second. All right. Motion by Counselor Cooper, as stated, awarding the contract, seconded by Counselor Flaherty. Any other discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. And just remind, I guess, I guess I want to just say for the record, a reminder that that this cutting was budgeted, correct, Mr. Norberg? So, you know, the idea, maybe it could come out, well, how come we aren't using that for the ambulance, for instance? But this is general fund cash to help us for the next year's cycle and carryover. Is that a correct way of...
That is correct. The way that that money was budgeted in the city's budget for this year is that is starting capital for the general fund for next year.
All right, thank you. All right, I think we're at good of the order. Counselors, anything for good of the order? We do have one good of the order on our agenda. It is a council workshop with our city attorney, September 15th at 6:30. Right here in council chambers?
Right here in council chambers. So our office will be presenting probably quarterly workshop to the council, legal issues for the council to learn about, and I'm about to get up and hand to each and every one of you your very own binder for you to study up for the September 15th workshop. Now, the quiz will be open book. Now, there's a lot to learn, and the issue is prohibited serial communications. It's a really ripe topic these days. All of us lawyers who represent cities are sharing information back and forth, and actually it's, it's gonna be fun, and I might even bring some other serial for you, we'll see. So I will hand these books out now, and then we'll take this up on the 15th at 6:30 in a workshop.
It's a round table, so we're just gonna sit all together at the table, we're not gonna be secluded.
Yeah, I'd do that.
Yeah, I like it, it's a good idea.
All right. All right, as Mr. Costello hands those out to us, I'm going to close our general session at 7:42, and I'm gonna be turning it over to our URA president, President Corvus.
All of this is due by the 15th? Okay, studies, have fun. All right, so I will call the URA meeting to order at 7:44. First up is the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Next up is good to the order. Is there anything for good of the group? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and move on to adjourning the session at 7:44.
All right, there we go. Thank you, President Corvus, and thank you, everybody, for joining us. God bless you and have a safe September.